Evening, the August 29th special meeting which is called for the purposes of conducting[73.15][73.15]interviews of the finalist candidates for the Troy City manager position. For the public who might now just be joining us for this televised meeting, we completed the first three interviews of finalist Jim Creach, Vincent Pastew, and John Gaber. Our next candidate to be interviewed is Brian Kishnik. The interview is expected to take about two hours. City council members have prepared approximately thirty questions in advance of the meeting, so the candidates should be prepared to answer each of the questions in approximately four minutes. City council members will take rotating turns in asking the questions. Members of the public will not be provided with a formal opportunity to ask the candidates' questions, but the city council encourages the public to communicate their observations to the council members through email prior to the deliberations which will take place today at 3:00 PM. There is also a public comment portion of the meeting which is scheduled as the last item of business under the city council rules of procedure. Good morning, Mr. Kishnik.
Good morning.
Councilman Teetz will begin the questioning.
Good morning.
Good morning. If you could give us just a three-minute synopsis of your professional background and accomplishments, just to remind us and jog our memory.
Well, to jog your memory, I'm the guy from Titibowasi Township, and that's the one that's easy to say, hard to spell. And I've been there just over ten years, and it's a wonderful community north of here. Before that, I was in the city of Asser as a city manager for seven years. So as the manager, I've employed the concept of a long-term approach to working in a community, not job hopping or job jumping. And I've been fortunate to work with great boards in both communities over those seventeen years, people who are willing to work together and make sure that the community was a better place when we left. So before that, I was a number of places, including Largo, Florida, for a couple of years as an assistant to the city manager in a very thriving economy in Florida. And prior to that, I was in Ingham County, which is the capital, as you know, capital county of Michigan, and worked in the budget office and worked my way up to the senior budget analyst and then acting budget director with a significant budget there. However, prior to all that, I grew up in a family that owned a machine shop business. My father and grandfather ran that since 1945 and sold in the mid-1990s. So I know what it's like to go through Michigan recessions personally, and I remember the early eighties, early nineties for sure when things were not good in the automotive industry, and my father trying to find work and jobs with Caterpillar and Delphi and all the rest. So I come from a family business background, but went into local government as a result of a mentor of mine, Tom Dalton, who got me involved, as I told you the other night, in the profession as an engineer driving the train at the Saginaw Children's Zoo, my first city job.
Thank you.
Tell us what you've done in your past jobs to ensure that council members are informed with both the pros and cons of any particular project so that they have the information they need to facilitate doing their jobs?
Well, number one, that is the role of the city manager, right? I know the issue always comes up with different candidates and different philosophies of what is the role of the city manager. But one of the primary roles of the city manager is to make sure we do our due diligence, to research issues. Well, first of all, identify issues as a team, research those issues, and communicate them, and give it the time and energy and stakeholder involvement necessary to identify the options, and communicate that to the city council and staff, by the way. It's just not a one-way street. I think in the early days, I would just communicate to the city council. But I think that's changed, and having the team together, communicating with staff and the city council on the issue so everyone's informed, whether it be via email, whether it be via one-on-one meetings, whether it be...I have an open-door policy, and my office is actually not behind the gatekeeper of the front desk. I'm actually, you could walk right into my office off the street, and I'm right there. And that happens a lot with city council or township board members in this case and staff, so that when there's an issue or when they have something on their mind, they're welcome to come in my office. The old days, we used to do a lot of phone conversations, but I think there's a lot more one-on-one as well as email to keep everyone informed of all the issues. But it's really bringing the right people together, bottom being staff, top being city council, and communicating that to everyone so that you can make a very concerted decision.
Thank you. In what ways might government learn from free-market successes? Describe any methodologies adopted from the private sector that you have applied in the public sector, what worked and what didn't work.
Right. Well, first of all, it was about seventeen years ago, we were tasked on a research with the city of Largo, a research project on how government can run like a business. And we went on a retreat for two days discussing how government could run like a business. That was seventeen years ago. I honestly am not going to sit here and profess that I remember all that we talked about. However, we were trying to make changes because when I think of free-market enterprise, I think of competition, I think of profit, and I think of focusing on the core business. So just with those three free-market enterprise principles in play, competition, government's not a monopoly, even though you may have been, think, thought that, and thought that in graduate school. The reality is, we are competing all the time. So I went with other municipalities, other states, other regions of the country, but it comes down to, how can we work together on one hand with, through public partner, public-private partnerships and other public partnerships, yet be competitive? In Saginaw County, we work together a lot. There are several authorities working together for the same goal, and in economic development, that's one of them. And I will tell you, it's concerning to me at times because when a major player's coming in from Asia or China, and I think that the Economic Development Agency is sending them somewhere else, and I get a little competitive. So I think government needs to be competitive, but yet work together. But competitive first. I think profit, obviously, there's no profit and nonprofit, right, or municipality, but there is. It's called sustainability. You have to set rates, so the rate payers, taxpayers of today, aren't paying more for services today that should be paid for over time because you're creating large fund balances, even though in Titibowasi Township, we have 100% of expenditures in fund balance. And that's sort of the unwritten policy of my board, and it served us well in down times and... But, so profit is, you have to have a level of fund balance that everyone agrees ensures the sustainability of the municipality. Because in Michigan, we know there's downturns and there's upturns, and no one is immune to it. So that's the profit, that's the competition, and then focusing on the core business. A lot of times municipalities make the attempt to get into all different kinds of activities, programs, services, and lose focus of what we are really here to serve the people for. Township government in Michigan, and I've been a city manager and a township manager, they're both very respected. Townships have a real sense of what are the core services: infrastructure, economic development, police fire, period, okay? Obviously, planning and all the elections and that kind of thing, but they're really focused on the core services, and that's what you have to do in business, right? When my dad tried to do several other things in his business, or really branch out, buy a new building, expand quickly, three shifts over three, you know, over, three shifts over the day, things were not ready, and it didn't work well, and then there's always a pullback.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there any particular success in business that you think government should emulate? Some specific thing that you have noticed that some company has done, and perhaps you don't want to use Enron or Madoff or anything like that?
Not so, well, not so. I mean, we're in the Detroit area, right? So the legacy costs of employees is one of the largest issues in, what, the last five years? So, and I think the accounting standards, and by the way, I'm not an accountant, but I do like the financial world and the financial piece of local government. Legacy costs are the biggest issue that was brought to the forefront with GM and Chrysler, and probably Ford as well, but not to the extent, right? So identifying your legacy costs, whether it's pension, whether it's health insurance, and what the replacement revenue is, what the programs are, you know, municipalities have always been, or I think traditionally been, defined benefit in the pension world and pretty, pretty good health insurance. Because of the legacy cost issue and identifying that in the financial statements, I think you've really seen that issue of what the cost of doing business long-term, the sustainability piece, come to the forefront because of the business world, and obviously, some of the failures.
Are there any internal operational things that you witnessed that you would consider a free-market success that can be emulated by government?
Internal operations, I would, you know, the first one that comes to my mind is that we do a lot internally is cooperative purchasing. And I'm not sure that that's emulating the business world, but it is taking some economies of scale and reducing the per-unit cost so that you get more bang for your buck. I guess that would be one that comes to mind.
Good morning. The next question that we have for you, we would like you to provide an example of a time when you believe that your council or board was wrong or misguided on a very important issue. Tell us what the issue was, what you did, and what the end result was.
Where the city council was, or the township board was wrong on an issue, I never say that the city council was wrong on an issue in public, for sure. This is the, the city council gets to make the final policy decision, whether it's wrong or not, in my opinion. It's simply up to me to explain to them the ramifications of that decision. I can tell you, one that was right was moving to a defined benefit program, even though it is a DB with the makeup of our municipality, it seems to work right now, and it's a hybrid DC DB, and I think that was, that was the right decision. I think a wrong decision that the city council made, or the township board has made, would be not, we were, we were in the process of establishing a 100,000-square-foot Freeland Sports Zone facility, which I've kind of laid out for you up here, and I like visuals, so I'd like you to see this. And what we decided was, I would create this 501(c)(3) and be the president of that nonprofit that would fundraise all the money as well as staff it, hire the employees and staff it. And I had a board member or two, and enough, on the township board at the time to go along with it, to say, "We don't want all these employees of this facility to be township And I think that we've shown that that's turned out to be wrong. It's more, it's run more like a recreation department, like you have, yet these employees report to a 501(c)(3), which was twenty-seven people that I put on this board that was tasked to fundraise, not really run a major facility and hire people. So the staffing of the facility was very muddled and very disconcerted because there was really nobody to report to and no real oversight. In the past nine months, we've corrected that, and we've created an executive committee that oversees the director and the full-time staff. Even though there's still employees of the 501(c)(3), we do oversee, have a lot more oversight and personnel policies. And I think we were just wrong in trying to be too complex and too creative with the project to not have them simply be employees of the township. We do, we have an agreement as a township with the 501(c)(3) to do the payroll, to do the payables. So it all runs through the township as a separate entity with a separate contract. But I guess in the end, why do we have all that complexity and some would call bureaucratic tape of a process?
I'd like to drill just a little bit down, down some more on this. You've identified the council that have been wrong on a particular issue, and you indicated something, you've touched on it a little bit, but let's say there's definitely an issue that you believe with all your research that the council's made a decision that's absolutely wrong. I'm going to use an example I've been using because it's so ridiculous, it's easy to visualize. The council wants to put in a carousel on Big Beaver Road, and this is mentioned in the public, public meeting. What would you do in the next three days?
If it came up at a city council meeting that the council wants to put a carousel in the middle of Big Beaver Road?
Right.
In the next three days? First thing I would do in the morning after the council meeting is I would assemble the group, for sure the police department, for sure the traffic and safety people, the city attorney's office, and I would sit down and I would say, "What are all the ramifications of putting a carousel?" First of all, why do we want to put a carousel in the middle of Big Beaver Road? And there may be good, maybe good reasons. It's hard to imagine, but is it serving as a roundabout? Maybe we could, maybe we could get creative and have a roundabout in the city of Troy. However, I would assemble that team, and I would begin to outline, just as I have here, the process and the pros and cons of a carousel in the middle of Big Beaver Road. I would immediately distribute that to the city council by that night, get the feedback from the city council, and meet back again to refine the project. Because what I find, and I like your, I like your idea of the next three days, because if it goes three weeks, I don't think there's going to be a real process of evaluation. I think the next three days are critical to establish what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it, and lay that out.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you provide examples of actions you have taken in the past to build a cohesive team and gain the respect of department heads and direct reports? And what worked for you, what didn't work for you, and maybe why or why not for each of those?
Yeah. So building a cohesive team, I think number one is, it starts before you meet the team. It starts with your history. And to have a long tenure or a longer tenure than average city managers, I think is a first step. Having a good rapport with staff is the second step. But the first thing, when I get there, is to establish that we're going to work together, and how are we going to work together, and that we appreciate the professionalism. Because what I find in Michigan and even Florida, wherever I've worked, the staff is very professional and very good, and they really do care about the community. So recognizing that upfront, I was just in one of my evaluation, and I had a board member say, "You know, what I would do if I were you is just walk across the parking lot and sit in the police chief's office and just say, 'I really think you're doing a good job, and I appreciate you.'" And that's probably the best advice. With email, with phones, with texts, I think we take all that for granted. The management by walking around, maybe it's overplayed, but I think the one-on-one conversation is the way to build relationships. Because you have to build relationships before you build cohesive teams. A good relationship isn't a good team because people have to trust each other. So what I've done, in addition to the obvious staff meetings and making sure everyone is involved in the appropriate decision-making and appropriate programs and projects, what I've done is, is I've tried to create an environment where we also do something outside of work as a group. We did room ball in Asser, and everyone had an absolute blast. But you get people out of their element, you get people out of their comfort zone, which is where people need to be if they're going to trust each other and start building the team and start respecting each other and working together. I just finished Camp Timbers team building last weekend with our hockey team, and I personally think that our staff should do that. We probably will because it puts people out into nature in different team-building activities where they work together and start to establish that rapport outside of the workplace. And then inside the workplace, I think it's respect and professionalism to begin to build that team. The last thing is celebrate success. I think you have to celebrate success. And in this day and age, I personally can tell you I don't do it enough. I don't think other people do it enough. Managers, staff, councils, residents, who met consultants, whomever, celebrate success more often. Because there's really great things going on in all communities, in all businesses. There are great things. But we want to find the fault because we're taught to solve problems. Well, to solve problems, you have to see the problem, feel the problem. That's good, but that can't be the focus. The other thing I do is establish, and I don't want to call them continuous improvement teams because total quality management's a thing of the past, right? But it's, but it is still in play as a concept. As an acronym, it's not, we were talking about that earlier, the acronyms, but as a concept, it's still in place. But when issues come up, getting the team together so that everyone has a say. I'll give you an example. I just made the decision the other day, the person out front, who's one of our, one of great employees, who handles all the building permits and requests, asked me if I thought the builder, the mechanical inspector should be following up on mechanical permits that are more than three years old, right? And I said, "I don't really see a need to follow up. It could, it could have changed ownership, you know, new people. I don't, I don't know that that's the best use of our time." And so the next day, I get a call from the building inspector, "What are you doing? We have to, we have to take care of all these old mechanical permits." So there's a case where I didn't do what I just told you we should do. And so again, lesson learned, which is what I do a lot, bring the group together that needs to come together to work through the problem. And that's how you build a team. Relationship first, team second, celebrate success.
Brian, talk about process improvement and continuous improvement.
Okay.
Both generally require a long-term commitment in order to institutionalize the change within the organization. Tell us how you have sustained a long-term emphasis on improvements so that they become lasting improvements.
Right. It's a good question. A number, a number of examples come to mind in terms of improvements or just sustainability. How are you going to set up a situation so that it's sustainable, that it's solid and sustainable? How are you going to do that? And I'll talk about that in a second because when we set up the agreement with the Freeland Sports Zone and the different entities, I'll show you how we made that sustainable. We made the process so that it would work. But the first thing, and the more appropriate administrative-type improvement, I think, is geographical information systems, and I can tell you, the city of Troy is outstanding. Whoever's in that department does a very good job. I spent a lot of time, as you read through my information, involved in GIS, and I, from an early stage, so I'm not a tech guy, but I saw the benefit because, number one, we would have a lot of real estate agents coming in, looking for, you know, looking for information on the property and doing comparables, and all that is readily available online. So how do you sustain that, though, right? That's an improvement, you provide that, but you must continue to update it. That's, that's the problem with mapping, right? Once it becomes a couple of years out of date, it's not sustainable, and it's not usable, and then we get the phone calls, and this happened, by the way, it's not updated. I don't see that property in there. I know it changed hands, I sold it. So you have to keep it updated, but you have to use the geographic information systems mapping to help the real estate agents. It helps your residents. Now, your assessor of thirty-some years, which is extremely impressive to me, is not going to like this, but it also helps your residents if they're going to the board review. All the sales data is in there, you can do the comps, and you can make sure that going forward, everyone has free and equal, open access to that data. What they do with that, that's where we can argue, right? That's where board reviews can argue, that's where we can all have the discussion. But it's free and open and available to everyone. So we've continued to do flyovers, we've continued to do layer upgrades, I've continued to hire interns that are very tech-savvy, GIS people, because that's how we get that information out, and that's how it's used. Could I go on to this other one, and I'll talk about sustainability and how you set up a process that makes sure financially it's sustainable?
Brian, we're trying to keep things under like four minutes.
Okay.
Question, you go ahead.
I'll do this in thirty seconds or less.
Okay, we'll watch you carefully.
So the township appoints the DDA, who created the Freeland Sports Zone, and the FCSA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The DDA has a management agreement to run the Freeland Sports Zone over ten years. That's not very sustainable, right? There's no, nothing sustainable about that, you just have an operations agreement. We built this gymnastics center of about 12,000 square feet. It's a ten-year lease. After ten years, what happens? It's $150,000 a year, free and clear, let's say some maintenance and upgrades, but let's say $100,000. Mid-Michigan Medical is a huge player in Midland, and they opened up a 12,000-square-foot facility, medical facility with ReadyMed attached to it. We own the building, we built it, paid off the bonds with their ten-year lease. The bonds are both paid off in ten years. So in ten years, what happens? It's another $150,000, free and clear, so that's about, say, $200,000, 20% of the budget, free and clear funds that will go into the Freeland Sports Zone to keep this 100,000-square-foot facility operating and improving. Because what do people say when you try to do these kinds of projects? It'll, yeah, we can do it today, but what happens ten years from now? And everyone uses that ten-year term. So we knew we could make it for ten years, what happens after? So that's my thirty seconds of my summary.
Hey, Brian, can you give us several examples of types of negotiations that you've done? Were you a direct participant in the negotiations or a third-party facilitator? What were some of the issues? What steps or processes did you follow to reach the agreement? Which party won, and why? Five words or less.
What is it, five words or less? Everyone wins some of the time. Six words. I tried to, the coffee's not bad. Okay, negotiations, land negotiations, labor negotiations, lease negotiations, depends on what we're talking about. Because there's all kinds of different negotiations. So let's just talk about labor because I'm assuming that's where you're going with it. I've always been, since Asser, so seventeen years, the lead negotiator in labor negotiations for the most part. I ran into a situation for one time with the Police Officers Union who decertified from the POAM. So I brought in an attorney because I didn't want there to be any appearance of taking advantage of a decertified union, especially the police, right? So we were able to come to terms with individual agreements before they had to wait, is it a year, I think, after you decertify, to come to terms with individual agreements, so they felt covered. That's number one. And then they've joined another union, and things have been very good. But I've always been a lead negotiator, whether it's the DPW, the clerical, or the police. And I've always enjoyed labor negotiations because the method is this: collective bargaining goes on every day all year long. If you're going to come to the table with your five proposals in the briefcase and just throw them out there, anybody can do that. That's going to lead to an impact. That's going to lead to an impasse or a lot of hostility. What we do is, and Tidewassee Township, it's, I give the board all the credit. They've always treated people fairly. And it's, when it's outside of the contract and they wanted to do something, we were willing to do it. So I think if you ask most people where I'm at now, there was never a situation, they probably don't know when their contract ends. Because we treat the contract, but not strictly, because they want to treat everyone fairly. So if that makes sense. But as a lead negotiator, I believe we treat people fairly. But first of all, before you do that, you have to identify the cost of labor. You have to identify the main issues. You have to share with them where the budget really is. And of course, there's always the feeling by some, whether it's the public, the council or staff, that there's money being hit. And so you have to create an open environment where that is not the case. We always do comparables. And I think comparables are a bit overplayed because you never really know what the others' communities are all about, what the makeup is, or what their taxing structure is. But because of Act 312, Police and Fire, I think comps have come into the mix pretty strongly, just because you're going to need them anyway. I've never gone to Act 312, except in Ingham County, but I wasn't the lead in Ingham County, as I just said. And Ingham County, we lost very badly to the Sheriff's Department. We have employed a few creative things, or maybe not so creative, in the bargaining process, understanding the difficulty that a raise creates, whether it's a DC or a DB pension plan, what it does cumulatively over time. We've implemented lump sum payments once a year so that there's no increase in compounding every year. And to be honest with you, the employees, I think, liked that because of the, you know, when they get it, June and December, or I'm sorry, July and December, it's a good time of the year, right? Summer and Christmas. But I think it's kept the township at bay also in terms of creating liabilities and compounding interest over time. Does that help?
You've touched on some of these, but I'd be curious to hear some other specific examples. Managers often have vexing problems that defy the traditional problem-solving methods. And can you tell us about a time when you employed your creative talents to solve an administrative problem? Please, please.
Well, I hesitate to lead with this, but Jim Creach brought it to my attention the other day, so I have to. In Vassar, there's a large hill, and for years, people have gone up that large hill with their truck and dumped pumpkins out the back. It's very slippery, very dangerous, very fun. That was a serious problem, as funny as it may seem. You'll have to be sitting here thinking, "Really? Did he just say that?" But it truly is, you have no idea, right? The local government has issues from here to there. And so we instituted a pumpkin roll, and Creach reminded me of it the other day. And they still do it to this day, where everyone comes out one night a year, obviously during the Halloween season, and they roll pumpkins. And it's a huge community event. And it's one in a ward with Michigan Municipal League. And it's a bit embarrassing, but not a lot. Secondly, creatively, we had a graffiti problem at one of the railroad viadocks. And what we did is we had a contest, it was called a Do Something Contest I started. And people could, kids could submit their ideas, and we would give them $500 to do something to make it a better community. One of our sophomores in high school, I'm not sure, I'll be corrected on this when I get back home, but one of our local youth, who is an outstanding artist, and this is about 15 years ago, created a mural of the town with the trains and all the logging and all the different attributes. And it still stands there today. And he had national recognition for doing that because it was so outstanding. And graffiti went away once people saw that a local kid did that on the viaduct. Administratively, I'm sure, if I don't do this, Mike will get to me, administratively. In Largo, Florida, it was a big deal. And in Tidewassee Township, it's also a big deal, and we try to rectify it. Creatively, one-stop shop is a bit of an old term, but when you go to get your building permit here, your sewer permit here, your zoning permit here, all these different agencies, and a lot of times, you have to go to the DPW, you have to go to the administration office. So in Largo, we put one-stop-shop at one counter. And in Tidewassee Township, we're doing the same thing, even though you still have to go to the DPW for your sewer and water. But I would consider that a bit of a failure, even though the auditors think that you need the separation of duties and funds. But one-stop-shop, I think, has been a great creative response to serving the public. Could I give you one?
Me one?
For City of Troy?
There you go.
I just noticed on my way in this morning, and there's probably a reason, so please don't take this as in stone. But you have your, and most municipalities have a drop box right outside the door, right? And that's great, so they don't have to walk wherever they have to walk, upstairs or in. But your drop box is not a drive-through, so you have to get out of the car to come up to the drop box. So you might as well walk in.
Yeah.
Oh, so you have a drive-through. So that's awesome. But I saw this lady today, get out of her car, walk up, and drop her thing. So that would be mine for you. See, there are no new ideas, folks. Everything we've learned, we've learned from somebody else. Do you know who said that?
From time to time, actions occur which damage the public's confidence in city government. Give us an example of how this has happened and tell how you handle it.
Damage the confidence?
Public's confidence in city management.
I can tell you, and I've had a lot of situations. I guess the most serious and telling one that comes to my mind is, in one community, I had a department head who oversee finances, who was having some issues and things became interesting and difficult to follow. And that person resigned unexpectedly with an interesting reason, which didn't really make sense. A staffer and I would do payroll and payable, physically sit there and do the payroll and payable. And I hired a new fiscal services director between the group, mainly the new fiscal services director. But I will say, the deputy treasurer always brought it to my attention, there was something, that there were situations where receipts were fabricated, money was missing, and there were some serious issues. So with that, what we did was, and monies were stolen from my personal pension, as we found out. So there was a quasi-forensic investigation. And I say quasi, state police were involved. They're not real quasi, they're pretty serious, right? But we used our own, new fiscal services director and state police to work together. And we would meet on a, almost an everyday, every-other-day basis to determine the extent of it. Because you're always wondering, is there more out there? Did you miss something? And you never know. And the public's confidence, when that happens, is very, very low. So we did everything we could to take our time, by the way, identify the process that we were using, and document everything, meet with the prosecutor, and meet with the state police to uncover and come to a resolution with the former employee and their attorney. So that's probably the most telling one where I think the public's confidence. Unfortunately, I think you hear more and more every day, so it's incumbent upon you to share financial data, explain financial data, have several sets of eyes with financial data, to ensure that there are multiple checks and balances so it doesn't happen again. Because when it happens the first time, you do your due diligence, and it's pretty much over. If it happens again, shame on you, shame on me, right? So you don't get a do-over in those situations.
Brian, was there any additional steps taken regarding publicity or getting the word out to the public about these activities to correct the situation?
We did not get word out to the public, no. And I would stand by that decision today. We communicated with the council as to what was, or the township board, as to what was going on, and the state police, and the prosecuting attorney at every step of the process.
Mr. Cusnick, please provide an example of complex financial project for which you were responsible. What made it complex? What was your specific role in the process? And what was the most difficult part for you?
There are two, but in four minutes, we don't have time. So I'll briefly touch the one. The city of Saginaw, we purchased our wholesale water from the city of Saginaw, and they get it from Lake Fish Point. Very good water, excellent quality of water. And many of the, all of the municipalities, I should say, in Saginaw County, that aren't on wells, get their water from the city of Saginaw. They hired Black and Beach Consultant, you may be familiar with, because I know the city of Detroit uses them, or has used them, to do a study. And basically, the study was to, based on the city manager and I think some of the city's philosophy, to make sure that the suburbs weren't going to grow anymore. Because without water, it's very difficult to have growth. And growth was a big issue. Black and Beach did a study, and the study came out, and our rates in Tidewassee Township were going to go up 132%, which is a staggering increase. That's not the complex financial issue. The complex financial issue is understanding the study that Black and Beach did, which is determining distance, drag, water pumping capacity, pumping costs, and how every municipality would pay a different readiness to serve charge based on their distance, drag, and then coming up with the numbers and what the true cost around the Saginaw Water Plant was. And we formed an intermunicipality water committee of several members, wholesale water customers, not everyone joined. The largest customer did not join, that being Saginaw Township. But the rest of us did. Cochville Township Supervisor, Ken Bain, he took the lead. I was the treasurer. Frank Emuth was the vice chairman, or, yeah, vice chairman. And we hired Raph Tellis as a group, and we met all, probably monthly or weekly, to go through the study to determine a different methodology for setting the water rates. That was much more fair. That was my short example. My role in that was I was the treasurer of the authority, and it was up to me to communicate with the residents why they were getting this significant, almost doubling of their water rates. And it's not enough to just say, blame it on the city of Saginaw. Because that's the easy way, right? City of Saginaw raised rates, that's what we're going to, that's the reason.
Follow-up question. Can you tell me why Saginaw Township didn't join your committee?
I can, with all candidness, because we were all, there were several of us who, during our water contracts, Tidewassee Township was well over. We had about a 90 million gallon a day water contract. We were using 130 million gallons a day. Saginaw Township was within contract, but close, as I recall, and the city wanted us all to sign 425 agreements, which is urban cooperation agreements. So there'd be some revenue sharing. If we had a new development, we would have to pay the city of Saginaw based on this agreement. Saginaw Township didn't want that, so they thought, because they had encircled their boundaries with water. So they thought if they didn't join this fight, and their rates weren't going up that great either, they thought if they joined this fight, they could be held harmless. And to this day, I would, I'm guessing that they were held harmless on that front. It's an interesting water issue. Do I have time for a follow-up?
Have you been, have you been?
Go ahead.
It's about, you're right on the edge there.
Right on the edge, okay. All right, I'll get to it some, I'll get to it another time.
Can you please tell us a little bit about the methods that you would use in strategic planning?
Strategic planning, sure. And we've covered some of that, you know, approach to planning, approach to strategic planning, approach to, you know, master planning. When you're in a smaller community, I think your master plan is more of a strategic plan. But what I, what we've always done, and I just did this recently again, is there are so many studies, number one, that municipalities have, whether it's a corridor study, whether it's a water study, master plan, all these things. What we do is we sit down and we do a literature review. It's almost like a master's thesis. We summarize each, all of the plans, so that at least you have some historical background of what's been, what's been talked about in the past. Because if you don't have the institutional memory of the past, your future's not going to be that bright. So I go through the literature review. Obviously, I put together the stakeholders, and probably that's the most important piece, is putting together the stakeholders. And one thing that I'm always impressed about in every community I've been, Tidewassee Township as well, there are people outside of the municipal halls that are very, very qualified and have a lot of energy and a lot of resources to be part of the process of determining during the feasibility planning, what do we, where do we want to go? Where have we been? Where are we now? And where do we want to go? Because that's the process, right? When we get the group together, the first step is identify who we are, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses? We need to know, what are we good at? What are our weaknesses? For City of Troy, is it a weakness you don't have an identified downtown area? That would be something you would talk about. I'm sure you've talked about it. Is it a weakness that you don't have a major intermodal transit center? I'm sure you've talked about that recently. But we could talk about all those strengths, all those weaknesses with the group, and then what, who is it that we want to be? What's our vision? And then how do we want to get there? Because we do goals and objectives every year, at least I do, with staff and with the city council and staff. But that's not enough. It needs to be longer-term, more of an evaluation of where we've been and where we're going during the strategic plan.
Thank you. Please describe actions you've taken in the past to establish a sound relationship with council, city staff, and the community. Please provide an example of each one of those, if you could.
What were the, council?
Council, city staff, and community.
Okay, in that order, and I think we, one of the first questions talked about communication with council, and that's very important on a regular basis, even though if you meet twice a week. I use email to communicate with the council, one-on-one meetings. I don't do text with council because email, the beauty of email is it hits everybody at the same time, and it's the same information. So any information that's not, that's misconstrued, I can send another email out and say, "Hey, somebody had this thought. Here it is for everybody." I talked about one-on-one communication. I also do all our project-issue-specific meetings where I bring people, I bring developer in, engineer in, staff in. I always invite the township board, the elected officials. My meetings aren't closed to anyone unless it's personnel. And by the way, that can get, you know, a bit hairy at times. I'm not saying it's the best approach, I'm just saying it's what I do. So those are, that's the open-door policy that I have. Staff, same with communication. So what I send to the township board, I send to staff as well. Because it doesn't make sense to have them be a mushroom and in the dark all the time. And a lot of times, they're, you know, providing information on the issues. Walking around with staff, meeting one-on-one with staff, involving staff in the different project meetings, and then doing other informal project meetings, and then doing other informal activities with department heads. Community, I've been involved in several boards and commissions. I've been on the chamber board, I've been a rotary president of two different rotaries, so two different times. I believe in the chamber, I believe in what they do, I believe in the chamber being supported. I believe in the Lions Club, and that we have a strong Lions Club, and that's a pretty significant business community. And I also attend, with our year-end review, we put, we go have a meeting with a local businessperson, or we go to their business and sit down and talk, not just when they want something. The idea is to identify those that we should, we should be talking to and communicating with. Newsletter, obviously, to everyone, is very important. And I think that's the basics-
Okay, thanks.
...of communication.
Okay, Brian. What do you believe are the key measures of the financial health of the city? How do you monitor these factors, and how do you communicate them to the city council, the key measures?
Financial health?
Yeah.
Number one is the economic base of the community, classification, diversification. I've been in a lot of communities with a strong industrial base. I'm in a community with a strong residential slash commercial base, and that is a pretty significant measure, SEV taxable value, of how things are going and what the, how your community, how stable your community is. So at the end of the day, that's what the taxing, the tax basis is all about, right? Fund balance, I told you, we have a policy of 100% of expenditures of fund balance. That's not a written policy, but that's, if I didn't do that, I think there would be problems when I submit the budget. Budget versus actual, I think is key, looking at the financial statements, and it tells me budget versus actual, how well did you monitor the budget during the year? Because as a person who grew up in the budget process, that's, that's a key area of making sure that on a regular basis, you're monitoring the budget with the right people. If you have significant variances, I think that shows there might be some control issues, managerial issues. Bond rating, obviously, you have a strong bond rating here. We have a double-A bond rating, and for a small community, that's pretty, pretty good. I did just have a meeting with Standard and Poor's to determine how we could become triple-A, because we're always trying to get to that next level, especially if you have debt and, or the opportunity for debt. But it talks about jobs and the economic base, so vacancy rates, jobs, tell me about the community. Do you do a long-term budget, do you do a long-term capital improvement plan? Well, that tells me about the financial health of your community. Because, you know, if we're doing 10-year budgets, that's great. I will sit right here and say I don't think it has a lot of utility that far out. It does in terms of general trends, but the three-to-five year is certainly one that will tell you how you're going through the year and how you're going to end up, and to give you more of a longer-term approach to financial health of the community. Because nobody wants to leave the place worse off than when they came in, whether you're an elected official or staff.
Perhaps, based upon the communities you've been in, a couple of points that didn't seem to come up as an economic indicator for your, the health of your community. Have you looked at growth or building permits or anything like that?
We monitor building permits all the time. It's, building permits for us are one of the largest indicators that I did not see.
Have you been involved with any act of business, business attraction to your communities?
We have, yeah. We, we have, we've met a lot because of Hemlock Semiconductor, which is just outside of our community, and the zone that's created with them, there is a lot of technology-driven, solar-driven, because of Dow Corning Dow Chemical, opportunities, the silicon that they use in the solar panels, and the alternative energy approach. We look at, we've met with several, and what we identified was, how can we make it ready for them to come in? Not just what do we have now, what are the barriers to entry? Power is the biggest one in our, in our community. How do we get power to them? Because all the rest, sewer water, we can do that fairly easily. But identifying the barriers to entry and putting the best face forward, whether it's through tax abatements, or rate reductions, or permitting, working with the DEQ, we've had to work with the DEQ on the Dow Chemical issue pretty significantly, so.
What experience have you had in revitalization efforts, including how did you, what type of financing methods did you use?
So revitalization, it seems like that's what we're, that's what we do in all communities, no matter if it's a growth community, if it's a farming community, there's always the area, and that needs to be revitalization. And then, starting in Largo, we, I was part of the team that purchased the Aegon Building, which was a large facility, because we were moving the city, we were going to move the city hall to their old building, and they wanted to build a new one. Because the old city hall, and this may ring true to you, was in a prime downtown location, prime development location. So I did the property acquisition and secured the, packaged the parcels, if you will, and then did the four, the site right next to the city hall, in order to get it, again, ready for redevelopment. And then worked with the developers to come in and do a mall concept. In Vassar, we did a lot of industrial, we developed the industrial park, and we used everything from, you know, tax abatements to rate reductions, to site improvements, to sewer improvements, through the Department of Environmental Quality, through water extension, waterline extensions, to make those industrial developments happen, which was not your typical factory, by the way, when it's industrial development, and it wasn't. It was more like Rail America, a worldwide rail owner. So we were, we were redeveloping the industrial side of that. A lot of it was providing the necessary sewer and water. Sewer, a big one, because of the industrial pollutants and the pretreatment that's required. The downtown revitalization in, if you will, in Tewassee Township, we were able to secure a grant from the state of Michigan to fill in a ravine. Because of the investment one of the local businesses was making, reinvestment in their facility, to fill in the ravine, to have an outlot, we needed to go through the process of establishing a drainage district, which is no small task. And it's one thing, by the way, I've not heard a lot talked about in the city of Troy, is drainage. It's a pretty serious issue in terms of development and whether it's residential and commercial north of here. So then we were able to get funds to reconstruct the streets around that revitalization, that redevelopment area. I think that's, that's, besides, you know, I guess I should, I left out building permits on your question, it's pretty obvious, I just take it for granted, but, you know, the demolition, we, the DDA awards demolition grants, because we had these major blighted businesses that were vacant, and so we went to the owners of the property, and one, I brought an owner to the property, thankfully, and then gave the DDA, gave a demolition grant to knock it down for redevelopment. And, you know, $75,000, it's a pretty significant grant for redevelopment, and it got rid of a couple of blighted properties within the main corridor of the township. I was going to say one other, facade grant improvements, I'm sure you all maybe not familiar with facade grant improvements. They're very difficult to administer, but I've done them in every municipality I've been in, because, you know, we come up with the design standards and then incentivize that design standard implementation with facade grants.
Mr. Kistnik, with council agreement, it seems like the appropriate time to take a short break. Okay? We'll take five minutes, we'll recess this meeting for five minutes approximately. Will be posed by Mr. Culpepper.
I have an ask before I get to my question to go back a couple of questions and ask just a little bit more about the one question about the confidence the community would happen to have at the funds and that sort of thing. The question is, was there a conscious decision not to make that public or was it part of an agreement that required you to not?
Part of the ongoing investigation and the issue with the prosecuting attorney. It's extremely sensitive, right? And our hands are always tied in those situations. And if you step outside of that, even just a little bit, it's, you know, the liability exposure to the municipality is huge.
All right. Tell me about a time when you have had a struggle with having to say no to others. Also, tell me about a time when you found that you had to, that you overcommitted yourself to something. What did you do? How did you handle it? Have you personally evaluated that for future delivery on promises and that sort of thing?
Well, number one, I am the kind of person who overcommits and doesn't like to say no. I like to help people. That's how I got in this business, people helping me. And it goes all the way back to my eighth grade teacher at Peace Lutheran School who used to take three of us, hooligans, if you will, in his mind, to the senior center, the nursing home. And we'd have to teach current events every Friday to stay out of trouble. And so, the mentoring just continued from then on. The problem is, is when I started the Freeland Sports Zone seven years ago, as putting together the business plan, the business model, the financial plan, the operations plan, with a small group, by the way, because there's no "I" here. We've always worked in a small group. And it, as the facility opened, and I was the president of this 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we projected about five to 700 members, and we're at over 3,000, 4,000 memberships, not members, memberships. And the staffing, we thought we'd have about 15 people, and we've got 50 to 100 people. It was starting to take my, all my time. The problem was, was I enjoyed it. And it was something that I was in on the ground floor. I wanted to see take off, and I wanted to see be successful, and it was taking all my time. And so, that came to a head. And what I did was, what we did, the executive committee, we reorganized bylaw amendments to establish an executive committee, hired a new director, and established the executive committee for finance committee, for personnel committee, program committee, all of these types of things, so that I wasn't doing it all the time. Because I was there day and night, doing something that I thought was good for the community, that I thought was something that I wanted to do, but I needed to get back to the basics, is what it amounted to. And I realized that through a lot of different situations.
In realizing that, that you can have burnout and you can miss these commitments, even though you want to make them, what specifically have you done to correct that for future situations?
And that's what I did. I removed myself. I'm, you know, not as actively involved. In fact, hardly involved anymore, except from a casual user, and then the meetings, but a lot less involvement. And that's, you know, really stepping back. I used to, I coached our, my son's hockey team, you know, going through all this too. And that really came to a head and was taking a toll on me and my family, or my family and I. And so, I've since stepped down from coaching his team as well. Hockey parents can be enthusiastic, and it really does take a lot out of you when you're trying to be the manager, trying to have a major facility and do a youth sports program. So, I've cut back on that as well.
An important question. Imagine the city council is severely split on most every issue, and the situation is getting worse. You can't get anything accomplished because you're locked into a tight rope between the different groups or factions.
Real life or just hypothetical?
Hypothetical. And then, how would you handle the situation?
Yeah. Let me start by saying this. When I worked in Ingham County, we had Republicans, we had Democrats. And we worked for both parties all the time as staff. And as basic as that may seem, it was something that we took very seriously, working for both parties at the county level and party politics at the county level. And Ingham County, because everyone is trying to take the next step to state government, right? Whether it's state senator, or state legislator, or governor for that matter, because Diane Byer ran for governor and she was the county commissioner. But it's very, very political, and it's very partisan. And it's, we, I learned at a young age to navigate the waters of politics and partisan politics and stick to the issues. That's number one. Then I went to city government, and there were more of the, less of the party politics, but more of the issue politics. And so, I learned that way. Then township government, we got back into partisan politics. But all politics is local, so whether it's partisan or not, it becomes about the issue. And that's important to know. When there's division in the council, the only thing I know is we're, we have differences, right? Everyone has differences. We're always going to have differences. And we need to celebrate that. We need to recognize that. Because at the end of the day, we're all here for one reason. I don't care what your political party is, I don't care what your issue, your attitude on the issue is. You want Troy to be a better place to live, work, and play and grow a business, right? Everyone does. So, politics is the art of compromise, though. That's the definition of politics. It's the art of compromise. When there's divisiveness, the technique is to figure out where the similarities exist and where you can get some agreement and move forward. It's part of the process that there won't be, in my case, a 7-0 vote all the time. In fact, recently, we've had, we've had more six ones, you know, five-two, four-three. But you need to recognize that's part of the process. It's not my job to tell you, you should be doing this. You know, this is something you should be doing. As the city manager, that is not my job. That is not my role. That is not my place. If you talk to the old timer city managers, they'll tell you, when you go to a city council meeting, do not say a word unless you're asked, right? That's your business. So, you need to recognize that. You need to recognize your role and work through the issues that have divisiveness. Find the commonalities.
Describe the time when you felt it was important for your city to change direction and thinking, and you personally championed the change. What did you do? Were you successful and why or why not?
Yes and no. The best example is the city of Asser. They were talking about moving the city, the downtown, up on the hill because of the flooding issue. And a city in Wisconsin had done it. And there was divisiveness in that community terribly. And city manager fired, recall, all of the things that can happen in a municipality with strong emotional issues. And flooding is one of those things. When the whole downtown's underwater, it's serious, not to mention houses. We were able to have several public meetings with the drain commissioner, with community members, with the school, with the surrounding farmers, community business owners, to demonstrate why flood mitigation is the better approach. Elevating homes, craziest thing I've ever seen, literally elevating a home four feet off the ground. Creating the flood walls in the flood plain down through the main corridor so that downtown, it was kind of built in a bowl, didn't flood. And this is very controversial, by the way, even today, I'm sure. But we were able to get the funding, get the project, or get the project underway to elevate the homes that were just outside, in the flood plain, but just outside where it wasn't as bad, as well as get the flood walls and projects so that the downtown didn't flood. And I just drove through there last night, and it's doing very well. So, that's where the whole community was divided. And I'm sure you're going to ask a little more of the process of doing that, because it wasn't easy. But honestly, it, some nights, we wondered if we would ever get it done, if it was ever going to happen. I wondered if the sports zone was ever going to happen. It just, you just have to trust in the process that you're going through, which is getting the right people together, doing the analysis, and communicating that. And not, not being a ramrod. I guess that's as simple as I can put it.
What trends are emerging in American society that promise to significantly influence city management and operations in the coming decade? As city manager, how would you prepare Troy city government to cope with these trends?
Trends in city management affecting municipalities. Well, the first one is, I think this used to, I think we used to say it's more of a litigious society, right? I'm not so sure it is anymore, but I think it's more of a confrontational blame society. Because it's so easy to sit behind a computer now with technology and blast off an email, go on a blog site and write anonymously. So, technology is probably the most basic one. You're not on the phone anymore. I mean, people are literally, you know, emailing at two o'clock in the morning when something's really on their mind and sending that off. I was taught, in Little Rock, Arkansas, when I did an internship there, I was taught, at the end of the day, return every email and every phone call before you go home. That's a little bit easier said than done nowadays with all the emails and technology. So, I think technology really impacts, and I think employing that response with the city of Troy is part of the process that I think would help. You have to respond whether you have an answer or not. Because the technology's there, they know you got the email, it's time to step up and respond, one way or the other. I think, obviously, I think limited resources is one that's going to impact everyone. I think it's always impacted us in Michigan. You know, there were some good years in the 90s, but obviously, limited resources and how to deal with that, and how rightsizing, downsizing, whatever you want to call it, impacts the staff, impacts the level of service, impacts your core business. You talked about free enterprise, and I talked about core business. What is your core business? What is it that you should be doing? And what is the appropriate level of staffing? Because there will be limited resources. Obviously, I think the economy's on the upswing in most places. Certainly, here you would think so. But it'll take a strong financial management approach to continue a sustainability model. I think legacy costs are a big impact. I talked about that. I think everyone recognizing the impacts of their decisions today on the future, labor costs being a big part of it, alternative energy is a major issue, the environmental imprint, footprint of what we're doing today is also a big issue. Sustainability's a big issue. Transientcy, I think there's a lot more transientcy now because people are so busy in their lives, they don't give back to the community as much, and those talented people who are out there aren't involved. And so, we've seen involvement go down. People only want to get involved when it affects them instead of for the greater good. I think that's, I think that's a trend that's emerged. I'm not so sure that, and mobility has certainly helped that, right? The ability to be mobile, to move different places and get from here to there in a half a day. People working long distances away from where they are and flying all over. I'm not so sure there's a large demand for people to want to work for local government. That's concerning to me is, you have to be, you have to be competitive, but are you able to attract the brightest and best talent in local government? I think, generally, I think that's key. So, I think the work environment needs to be such, obviously, you know, in terms of the city of Troy, so that it attracts people. Please, don't take comments out of context. I'm not talking about a Google-esque type work environment here. It's a professional, but it still has to recognize the differences of people entering the workforce today. And that's why I hire interns, because they keep me grounded. They also keep my technological skills updated, but they really keep me grounded on where the future is. You're listening?
Well, in relation to those, how would you pair the city to deal with some of those trends? You don't have to give me one for everything, but it's something.
Yeah, well, obviously, I talked about the legacy cost. I think that's one that, you know, the financial statements and accounting standard, auditing, accounting standards have changed so that you have to identify that. We talked about that. I think the email, I think the policy is, a response is required because when, regardless of what the question is, regardless of what the criticism is, there is an answer. There's an answer at some level that needs to be forwarded to the person who took the time to respond. I think diversity, I think we're recognizing the diversity and celebrating that and providing opportunities for people to access the local government in a way that we're open. One of my, one of my biggest philosophies and approaches is to be open. You can always get me. You know, my council, township board just told me, you know, you need to turn the phone off, because I don't turn the phone off, because you need to have an open access. So, I have a little bit lately. Does that make sense?
Can you describe a sensitive issue that you've dealt with in correcting a subordinate? We're looking for what made the issue sensitive, what factors that you had to consider when dealing with it. Describe the process that you used to correct the problem and what was the outcome.
Personnel is usually where a lot of the sensitive issues are. I was part of the process to hire a police chief. And by the way, I enjoy putting together hiring processes to bring the right people together, go through the process of evaluation, whether it's making them do exercises and that kind of thing. I made the recommendation to the township board to hire a police chief. The younger, younger in age, never been a chief before, and it was met with a significant amount of resistance. And the issue, and the reason was, as to your question, is how to work with a subordinate, very militaristic, very interested in the attire of processions, and not a blue collar, roll up your sleeves, let's go to work together type of a chief. And definitely in small communities, you have to be a roll up your sleeves, let's get to work together, you know, I'll support you, you support me. So, that was getting worse and worse. I sat the chief down. I said, you know, everyone's coming into my office telling me we need to do something. I said, what, you know, what can you do? So, we have a departmental meeting, try to lay out how we can work together, develop the management plan, lay out how we can work together and make this a better situation. That was, I think the horse had left the barn by that time, and that was met with even more resistance. Because it wasn't, they weren't at the point where, I think we missed the boat, actually. They weren't at a point where, hey, let's work together. They were at a point, because they were telling me, let's get rid of him. And so, I explained to him after that, that it's time to look at your options in other employment. And fortunately, over a short period of time, the 45 days, he was, he went back to the job that he left to work there. So, to your point, put together the management plan together to identify what could we do? What could we do? How could we communicate more effectively? How could we have a more approachable situation or presence? How can we support the people who work for us? They don't feel like they can trust you and you're the chief of police. How do we, how do we work together to reverse that? Sometimes it cannot be done. And that was the case here.
So, basically, in this particular situation, you didn't have to take it to the point where you forced the issue, you were able to sort of tee it up, and then you was able to hit all elsewhere?
And that's, you know, that's been our approach. You know, let's not just get into a fire situation, which you're alluding to. Let's lay out the management improvement plan and give a timeline, albeit flexible timeline given the situation, but knowing that this is, because it was the police chief, it was, you know, we didn't have 60 days, I didn't think. 30 days was a lot to ask of the department to hang on, so.
What is your view of the role of city manager in the organization and how you view the relationship between the city manager and the city council? I know this has been covered a little bit.
A little bit, yeah. But, yeah, let me, let me just state the obvious. The role of the city managers, everyone will tell you coming in, is to manage the day-to-day operations of the city and to keep the council informed of issues and to provide recommendations. Let's start back. Options, analysis, and recommendations to the city council so that they can make an informed decision for the residents of the city that you're overseeing. Those are true. Those are the obvious ones. But the reality, I think, is, the city manager's job is to leave the place better off when he leaves than when he got there. Because that's what everyone says when they, when they leave, right? I left that place better off than when I got there. So, to that point, the task, the objective, the action point is to champion a better municipality, a better community. Do everything you can do to make it a better place for, to live, work, play, grow a business. So, there's two sides to that question. You know, the professional side I give you, but I really think it's more than that. It's community involvement. It's, it's making sure that you're doing everything you can to make it a better place. it a better place.
Brian, you often have to work cooperatively with the joining governmental jurisdictions. Give us an example of a structured partnership with another city or a township, a district, or maybe even a county that you have initiated or been involved with.
Intergovernmental relations is very important, and it's not always successful. We, one of our biggest successes in Saginaw County, in my opinion, was the county, and I wrote it in my information, was the GIS authority. And I was part of a small group that championed that cause, which is why I've been the chairman since the beginning, since 2004. Because the county was spending, the county did the project, as most counties did at that time, because of the comprehensive approach to mapping, which is positive, they were spending a significant amount of dollars, $900,000, for that. And we were all using it as municipalities, but not paying. I understand that when it comes to the jail and, you know, elections and all these other things. However, we really needed to take an active role in improving our mapping, improving the layers, improving its accessibility. So, we formed an authority, and we've had every municipality in Saginaw County except to join since 2004 and pay into it. And those two, bless their heart, I have to believe, they just don't need mapping for whatever reason. And they don't have the infrastructure, they don't have the services. But everyone else has agreed to continue to support it. The intermunicipality water committee I talked about, we formed that to fight the city of Saginaw and the rate increases that they were imposing on the outer areas. And when we didn't get inclusion by one of the largest users out county, we still went forward. Because we weren't going to be stopped and just accept a rate increase that was so exorbitant and so misguided in its premise to punish the out county areas, that we needed to do something. And we did that for a couple of years.
Good.
Brian, could you provide an example of what you've done in your most recent role as a city manager to put together the city budgets based on the unknown current economic conditions? What specifically have you done to ensure realistic forecast and budgets?
The first thing I learned in budgeting is, budgeting isn't a once-a-year process. And that's what I think it was in a lot of places. You know, we'd all hunker down once it was the budget season, but it's a monthly process. My fiscal services director is very, very good, and we meet monthly, gives me reports. She, and I'm not the only one, it's shared with people, so that we're talking around the table just like this, as to what we really think is going on. And from revenues, looking at building permits, looking at sewer water permits, are the numbers up, is the trend down? Looking at the, obviously, the state revenue sharing is a pretty significant dollar for us in terms of the percentage of the budget. And so, when that takes a hit, we have to make sure that we're looking out, and we are always very conservative. So, we review it regularly, take a conservative approach. And see, I came up through the budget office in Ingham County, so I'm used to costing out personnel and services all the time. And that's the biggest issue, is the cost of personnel. So, and we do that. And then, to be real, to make sure that our budget is on track and realistic, it's shared with the department heads, communicated with the department heads on a regular basis. And we start the process with, where were we? And how did we do last year? And where are we going?
Hey, Brian, describe a situation, this is really egotistical here, in which you were tempted to explore a new alternative, but realized the payback to the organization was not sufficient. And what led you to that final conclusion?
So, say it again, I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Okay, basically, you have an idea to, for the community. You studied it, you realized that the payback wasn't there, whether the payback was beneficial service or money, but a payback. So, it's your idea, it wasn't sufficient, and you had to back away from it. And what steps led you to that conclusion?
Well, I think the obvious one in small communities is the contracting with the sheriff's department for police services. I think that's an analysis that's, and I've been involved in that on both sides, where you look at the cost, sheriff to provide the service, you look at the benefit of not having the expense of the facility, of the personnel. We never took it very far, though. We did the analysis because there's typically someone who wants to see that analysis. And it's just happened, again, the city of Saginaw is talking about doing that with the sheriff's department. But what you realize is, you lose the local flavor, you lose that local touch, that local control issue. And the savings isn't that great anyway, because the sheriff's going to get paid what he needs to get paid, and there isn't that much of a differential. So, I learned, the other thing is, you don't have that community police feel, and I think your police chief was talking about it the other day. The downside of that is, a lot of people come in and have a question or complaint about something, and you're constantly following up on that, and it's preventing you from doing the real crime work. That's just part of local government now, today, and fielding those complaints, questions. But when you look at the cost of personnel, you look at the cost of labor, you look at the cost of the equipment, you look at the cost of the facility, it did not make sense in terms of, it may have been a small savings, but it's not, it's not a significant savings enough to warrant going through a process of moving everyone. On the other hand, we did our public works department, our wastewater treatment plant. We went through a, we were having trouble keeping a department head, the DPW superintendent. They would be there and then they'd leave, they'd be there and then they'd leave, so there's high turnover. So, we looked at contracting out that service. Wade Trim was the final selection. It costs more to do it, is what we found out, but we always had the licenses that were required to run the wastewater treatment plant, the water distribution system. And without those, and I was without them, those licenses for a while, the DEQ doesn't look too fondly on you. So, it creates a mini crisis. So, we were able to have a contract with Wade Trim that did cost more, but we did keep the licenses in place, and there was a lot more continuity. We didn't privatize, contract out, whatever you want to call it, the personnel, the workers. They were still township employees.
Mr. Kishnik, we have a time constraint, so if we could, these next seven or eight questions, if we could have two or three sentence answers, that would be great. Thank you very much.
This should be very brief. What do you see as challenges for you in transiting and or relocating Detroit?
Distance, distance and time. It's an hour thirty drive. It's obviously, it's, you know, it's not something I'm going to commute to here. But I've been a city manager, township manager, I always live in the community I work in.
So, your plans would be to move to Troy?
I have to.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Political considerations are an important factor when dealing with many community organizations at one time. Give us an example of a politically sensitive situation you found yourself in during the past year or so, and explain why you know.
Just the last two years, I was, we're in the process of selling a community hall building that the township owns. That's the old community hall, and it's rented out for different events, and we built a new one at the sports zone, so we don't need it anymore. The historical society would like it, they, to put their museum in there, they recommended a lease of $1, and that if they couldn't pay the bills, we would pay it. As you know, historical societies are very important to communities. So, it's very politically sensitive, but we had this, steps I took were, with the council, we said, let's do an appraisal of the building. Did an appraisal of the building, and they just awarded the real estate listing to a local real estate agent to try to sell the building. Since, the historical society and the chamber have come back and offered an amount much lower than the appraisal, but we shall see how that turns out.
I probably restricted you too much by saying two or three sentences, but that was nicely done. This next question, actually, you have answered quite sufficiently. How would you communicate with the organization, city council? So, I'll just pass that question and go on to Mayor Potem McInnes's question.
Sure.
What are your thoughts about technology in the workplace? You did give the example of GIS. We were also curious about how you felt about e-government, your city websites. Just tell us a little bit about the level of usage that you have with these types of tools.
Right. First of all, I think the city of Troy's website is very, very good. And so, whoever's in charge of that is well-done, and it communicates a lot to those out there looking. So, you know, I think, I always thought website was one of the, one of the best forms of e-communication. I'm not so sure I agree with that today, because it forces someone to go there. You have to have it, don't get me wrong, don't misconstrue. You have to have it, it has to be updated, you have to stay on top of it. But you have to find another way to communicate with people in almost real time, because that's where people are today. So, whether that's Facebook, because a lot of community events are on Facebook, whether that's email distribution lists, all our newsletters go out by email, whether that's Nixle for alerts that are out there, police and fire, you know, we've gone to that. I think you have to utilize all of them, but understand, one is a place to go to, another is a place to go to them. And that's the difference, if you will.
Speaker Slater?
What is the one thing about Troy that most interests you?
One thing?
One thing.
I can, personally, professionally, you know, it's a balance, right? It's, which, not, the one thing about Troy is, it is very professional and has everything, in my opinion.
Come on, please, Tony?
I guess, to put it that way. But it's a great place for your family. I mean, that's the real answer in terms of personal.
Good. Please describe the extent of your experience with business and economic development and redevelopment. What would you consider to be your most successful accomplishment in this area?
Business development? I think the, I think the attraction of redevelopment of the downtown site in Tewas, in Freeland, which, it was an old, old, is a conglomerate of old buildings. We put together, and everyone was upset that we weren't getting them torn down. So, we put together the plan to pursue demolition grants, pursue the owners with demolition grants, try to incentivize that demolition. And then, we worked with them on the performance, design standards, to create a development that was attractive and conducive to traffic in and out, because it is a main corridor going through town. So, it can't just be pedestrian-friendly. So, that's one. I can tell you, we've done, you know, at the sports zone, we created probably 150 jobs, a medical facility that has ready med, recreation or community jobs, and another private lease, and it spun off into other developments right next to it. So, and that's just working with the developers to pursue the idea, making it work.
Good.
Hey, Brian, last question. Ready? Okay. What specific steps have you taken in the past to help foster and develop relationships with union members that prove to be beneficial during contract negotiations?
You have to be, you have to be approachable and accessible. That's number one, and that's all year-round. And I am. The union stewards come in whenever they have a problem, or whenever they don't. So, they have, they have to be able to trust you, and you have to have a track record, an ongoing track record, that treats people fairly. That doesn't mean they get what they want, that doesn't mean we have an unlimited source of income to distribute out. They have to understand what the financial picture of the municipality is, and that you will be fair when dealing with them.
Thank you, Mr. Kishnik. We appreciate your joining us for this important interview process. Did you have any questions that you wanted to pose to the city council, or to city administration, or anything else you would like to briefly add?
I do. I will just ask two questions. The first is, what three accomplishments has this council achieved within the past year?
We have Open Troy on our portal. We, well, that's my contribution.
Yeah, I mean, we have a three-year budget that is sustainable right now, and I think that's something that's unique to Troy.
Anyone else have a?
Fund balance is at a point, I think, that is good for the city and projections, the whole of it.
That's good. My second question is, what will each of you do to contribute towards a successful transition of the city manager position?
Give you that same open access that you need.
Good.
Yeah. Just be available, Brian, to assist you in communication.
Communication.
Communication from me would always be there. And anything that I think any of us could do to help, I think you could always rely on that.
Very good. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. That concludes the interview. We'll reconvene at 11:30 for our fifth and final interview. The meeting is now recessed until 11:30.